Rebecca, you let me know when you're ready. Pleasure. All right, well, it's six o'clock, so good evening and welcome to the debate for Aransas Pass City Council Place Two, currently held by the incumbent Jason Knight, the gentleman here with the black cowboy hat. His challenger is Greg Farrar, our writing candidate just behind him. My name is Mark Silverstein, I'm editor of the Aransas Pass Progress Newspaper. It's a more than 100-year-old publication owned by the Mosher Community Media Family of newspapers here in Texas. Tonight's debate is being streamed live on our Facebook page, so please feel free to share the link with your friends and family. And of course, we hope that you hit the like button too, and follow the progress on social media as well as our companion publication, the Ingleside Index. Joining us in the audience to document this event for the Progress is reporter Rebecca Mette. Since this is being livestreamed, I ask that everyone in the audience here at the Aransas Pass Civic Center remain civil and observe proper decorum. Guests who are present are welcome to avail themselves of refreshments we've set out on a table here in the back of the room. I'd like to thank the City of Aransas Pass for permitting us to hold the debate here at the Civic Center, and recognize Kalen Paxton, Director of Community Enrichment, and City Manager Gary Edwards for their kind support. Prior to the debate, a coin toss was held to determine which candidate will begin with opening statements and who will go first with their closing remarks. Greg Farrar will lead off tonight's debates, and Councilman Jason Knight will be first with closing comments. At this time, I would like to introduce Pastor Donald Bolts of Crossroads Church, who also serves as chaplain for the Aransas Pass Police and Fire Departments, to deliver an invocation. Please rise as you are able and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States, followed by the pledge to the State of Texas. Pastor?
You'll join me in prayer. Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. This is the day the Lord has made, and we will rejoice and be glad as you were with flames. And we just thank you, Lord, for your many blessings upon our lives here in these difficult times that we find ourselves going through, we find that your mercy and grace is real, grace is sufficient to get us through. We ask for it tonight, that as we engage in discussion, a very important part of our political process, we pray, first of all, we give thanks for two gentlemen that are willing to serve in our community and make our community better. We ask for blessings upon them, their lives, their families, and upon our community, we ask for that you would bring a spirit of unity, and that we would be able to work together in a way that would make this community just an even greater place, so that we ask all these things in Jesus' name.
All right, if you will, to the flag of the United States, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the State of Texas, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated, thank you. So we can have the candidates, please, come to their places. Here is how tonight's debate will run. Each candidate is given three minutes for opening statements. I am acting as moderator, and will ask a series of four questions, with each candidate allowed up to two minutes to offer a response. The next section will permit each candidate to ask one another a series of questions, again, with their opponent given two minutes to respond, followed by one minute for rebuttal. This section will also allow each candidate to ask up to four questions, each taking turns in doing so. We will then return to four more questions that I will pose, followed by another opportunity for candidates to ask one another questions, and we will keep repeating this process until we are closed, to concluding the debate, just before 7:00 PM. At that time, I will instruct the candidates that they each have up to three minutes each to deliver closing remarks. Please, no questions are allowed from the audience, and both candidates have already agreed to these terms. Anyone who attempts to violate these conditions or become disruptive will be asked to leave the room. But we'll begin now with Greg Farrar, you have three minutes to present your opening statements.
Folks, I'm Greg Farrar. A lot of people have asked who I am, well, I am Greg Farrar. Now, a little bit about me, and who I am, and what I choose to progress my life with. For the past 25 years, I have really chosen my life to be based on four agreements. And those four agreements define who I am, what I am, and what I'm about. The first one is be impeccable with your word. Now, words are the largest power that God gives us, the words. And oftentimes, we don't understand the words. Words are really, say what you mean and mean what you say. Speak with respect when you're talking to people. And that is what, speak with integrity, being impeccable to your word. And that is something that I am, as I am impeccable to my word. You don't hear me gossiping about people, because that is not right. That is not being impeccable with your word. Speaking with integrity, trust, that's part of being impeccable with your word, and I am that. Second is don't take things personally. A lot of times, people ask why I hear what I hear on the internet and not respond. I don't need to take it personally, because of who I am. I am a very trustworthy, honest individual, that don't let the little things matter. People can say what they want, it's not a reflection of who I am, it's a reflection of who they are. So I do not take things personally, that's why I roll the law, because we're in this for a larger gain, and it's about Aransas Pass, what we can do for Aransas Pass. So those are the first two of them. Third is don't make assumptions. Oftentimes, what we do is we make assumptions, we assume something, and that determines what our value is, because of the investigation. When somebody assumes something without finding the facts on, it's not benefiting you as a citizen, not at all, it's making assumptions. You never know the facts until you check. And that's part of what I do, is I will investigate, I will not make assumptions, and the assumptions should never be made. And the fourth agreement is always do your best. Best under the circumstance, where you're at, what you're doing, your best is always going to change, but you have to do your best every time. So that's how I choose to live my life, and it's very good. I don't care diddly squat about what people say, because I know who I am. I am very impeccable with my word, I do what I say, I say what I mean. I don't think, take things personally, I shouldn't, because that's not a reflection of who I am, but what everybody else is. So that's a little bit about me, summing it up. As he said, I had two minutes to do it, I'm running out of time, but that should kind of define what I am, who I am, and what I'm about.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. So, Councilman Jason Knight, you now have three minutes for your opening statements.
I'm Jason Knight, being serving as your council member, Place Two, Aransas Pass, for roughly the past year and a half. And I grew up in this town, I've seen this town change tremendously from when I was a kid to what it is now. And I'm asking for your vote to continue representing you, because we are, we are at a crossroads of everything that's going on, from Ingleside out to Centwood, all the industrial developments coming up. I remember when I was younger, I could go into almost any restaurant in town, I knew everyone in there. I go into places in town now, and it's all new people, we're drawing people in from all over the United States right now, because this area is a hotbed for new industrial sites. We have to continue working on how to get some of these people to not just stop off at a gas station, continue on to Port Aransas or Corpus Rockport. We need to start figuring out how to get these people to stay here, because our biggest problem we have, we're drawing more people in places like Ingleside or Rockport. I don't know if everybody knows this, but you have Ingleside that has a tax rate of 66 per $100 valuation. Rockport is 39 cents per $100 valuation. Aransas Pass is at 78 percent per $100 valuation. We need to figure out better ways, myself included, how to save money, so we can lower this tax rate, to save you more money, to where you'll have more money to spend on your grandkids, your children, things around your home. It's a tough struggle, and we've got, our infrastructure is just deteriorating by the second. You have roads that are shambles, drainage that is hard to keep up with, our water system, thank goodness, right now, our water consumption rate is at all-time low of 7 percent, down from, I think, around 35 percent. So we're making progress, but there are a lot of things that we really need to act on, we need to act on it early. Thank you all for coming.
All right, so, thank you, candidates. We now move on to questions and answers. I will ask the first series of questions, each candidate is permitted up to two minutes to respond. Since Councilman Knight was last to present his opening statements, he will be presented with the first question, and Mr. Farrar will have an opportunity to respond as well. So, Councilman, Aransas Pass has a growing public health as well as a public safety crisis, with a rising number of opiate overdoses. Police have worked diligently to stem the tide of narcotics sales, but the problem remains. How would you, as an elected official, respond to this crisis and be specific with your plan of action?
I think one of the biggest things to do is get more community involvement within the city, because the police are limited at the job they can do, because there's a lot more citizens in town than our police. And if we had better community engagement, something like the old crime stoppers from there that we had around, to get more people, whenever they see something, to not, to not be in fear, call the police, call the non-emergency number 758524, or if you see a policeman around town, stop and say, "I see these people now, or you're behind my house, or in the front yard, I think you're doing something suspicious." Because I totally agree with you, that is a huge problem down right now, and it's, I have brought that up countless times, and city hall talk, there's cheap lines around it, because it is something that needs to be handled, because you have a drug problem, the first thing that's going to follow is theft, and theft is up dramatically right now, theft. I think that would be, that is the course of action that I'm currently taking right now with that problem.
All right, Councilman. Mr. Farrar, do you need me to repeat the question?
2016, we as voters in Aransas Pass approved a 0.05 percent tax increase for the Crime Control Prevention Fund. That was to help us for the next 10 years, fight crime, and provide the police department, public safety, those resources to help fight those crimes. That is considerable. When you look at the budget plan for next year, we have a 1.67 million-dollar foothold in that we need to discuss how we can fight these items. We have a house now called the Remnant downtown. I think we need to work with Place Chief Blanchard, work with the Remnant, and provide the opioid addicts a place to go for counseling. Take some of those funding into a counseling group. We have a place now that is struggling, because she is struggling by herself, with very minimal impact on the city, but yet, that's what she's doing, is trying to stop some of this opioid addict. We're not going to prevent it, this is a nationwide problem, but we can deal with it here, is, we can work with the police force, use that half a cent that we approved in 2016, and let's start applying some of that towards the rehabilitation of some of the opioid addicts that we see influxing the street, and provide the police with the option of doing something. Right now, our counties and our governments don't have a place to house these people, because the county government doesn't have a place to house them, a jail, a place for them to rehabilitate, so we have to do something ourselves. And I think we need to partner with Chief Blanchard and the Public Safety Fund, utilize the half cent that we got in 2016, and start being responsible on how we deal with this issue that is confronting us. I think Chief Blanchard is doing an outstanding job, but I think we need to take it another step further.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farrar. All right, our next question is, Con Brown Harbor is a major city asset in Aransas Pass, but rules and plays forbid the sale of any lands to developers, and only long-term leases are allowed. How would you like to see the harbor developed as a major destination, and how do you see your role as an elected official in fulfilling that goal?
Con Brown Harbor is in the way that it is, with no advancement as you go down, and you drive through it, thinking ahead, thinking of it for the citizens. As you go down in Con Brown Harbor, and I hope every one of you have driven down Con Brown Harbor, the two-lane road and the bicycle lane, if you have a flag, you stop traffic. You can't get boats on the east side around the bend because of the traffic patterns there. We need to develop that, because if we don't start developing that and developing it soon, then the industry's going to come in and take it from us. This needs to have fishing piers on it, there's no way that with our budgets and the allocation that we have, that we can't at least get some fishing piers, get some parts out there and start using it. People need to use Con Brown Harbor for a little bit more than just driving around because there's nothing to do. We need to start bringing the resources in. Perhaps it's a matter of changing the zoning code, and allowing Conexes to be built. Nation, up in Austin, they have one at the ballpark, it makes certainly of Conexes. Worldwide, they're using the abundance of Conexes, banded together, and if the city owns a property, and we don't want to have a retail, let's bring some dollars into us by leasing it out to artists that we have, go on in, go on in, to where we have artists go down there, craftsmen, and we start using it for the citizens. We just have to be creative on how we're using it, and the income that it does actually generate, but sitting down there, blank, sitting down there, empty, it is a canvas that is not being exploited.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. Councilman, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, no, that's okay. The harbor does eventually need to be developed, but we don't have to do it right now. Industry or no other entity can come in and take that harbor, because it is black and white in the town's constitution, the city charter. If any piece of that property is to be sold to town, it has to go on the ballot and go to those with people. And as far as developing on that property, when it comes town, or comes time, I think we should have numerous town hall meetings right here in this building, and just let everyone just write on a piece of paper what you think you'd like to see down there. Because, in my opinion, it should not be left up to five elected officials to decide what goes on in the harbor, when you all in this room, everyone watching, you are the bosses. We're up here to just represent you, because you put your trust to elect us as City Councilman or Mayor. And that would, that is definitely would be my course of action, whenever it comes time, to develop someone's harbor. But right now, like I said, I'm open statement, we have, we have some bigger problems we need to address, but yes, the harbor does need to be developed, because that harbor is a golden key to the city, and we would just take off like a rocket and prosper. And we also have to be careful building residential around the harbor, because you start popping up houses around the harbor, we could possibly end up with something, nothing more than a gated community, and no one in town will be able to enjoy the harbor like they have for the past 100 years.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, on to our third question. The Aransas Pass Fire Department leadership has told the Progress they would like a new and expanded headquarters building, they also need new equipment, some they can now afford thanks to a private fundraising initiative. And the department is still challenged finding new recruits, because our city pays less than many other paid departments in the region. What changes or cuts to the city budget would you make in order to help the fire department become more competitive in recruiting and hiring, and in providing them the tools and resources they need? Councilman?
We got on this subject a while back, and it was, it was a pretty tense time in town. 70 percent of fire departments in the state of Texas are volunteer or combination, due to the fact of municipality of the size like Aransas, we don't have the big budget like Corpus does. And the biggest killer with any city is payroll. Right now, our fire department is around a 1.5 million dollar budget, that our budget is higher than Port Aransas, Ingleside, and Rockport combined as a whole. I really think that we need to start implementing volunteers, keep the guys we have now, let attrition run its course. If you have a paid fireman that leaves, gets fired, or retires, replace them with volunteer. The volunteer fire departments outside of this town, see, they're doing fine, and they have been for, as much as they've been volunteered forever. This town used to be a combination of apartments since the mid-1950s until about 2012, and I see no problem with just gradually letting attrition run its course and starting to implement volunteer fire department, or firefighters, so our budget doesn't keep climbing higher and higher every year like it has been for about the past seven years.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Farrar, do you need me to repeat the question?
First place, I think I'd look at is some of our current expenditures that come out of the general fund. I don't think a lot of people realize that $387,000 each year, according to the 2122 budget, $387,000 is allocated for overtime. That is a considerable amount of overtime. One-third of that, approximately $162,000, is your free labor, it's walking out the door, it's going away. We have no control of that, because that is overtime dollars. That would be the first thing that I would certainly do, is sit down at the department heads and say, "Guys, how can we reduce this overtime? Why is so much necessary?" That's a considerable amount of money, 387,000, just for that one item. We spent last year just on electricity alone, on the budget that we were allowed, is $284,000 in electricity. We need to start the lights here, and you look at these lights here, we're paying this. This is a losing proposition with the Civic Center, that we're having the phone until we can get it rented. These right here, we can replace those, and we should have a plan to replace the LED to reduce the electricity consumption that we're having. Can we bring that $284,000 down? Just in the departments themselves, the departments themselves, they spent $121,000 on electricity last year. Those are little savings. Daddy always told me, if you watch the nickels, the dimes will take care of themselves. It's sitting down with those department heads and saying, "How can we reduce the expenses?" When you have an apartment that has supplies that have gone up exponentially, but yet the services haven't, then we need to look at the supplies budget. And that's what I would do, is look at the general fund, and go through, and drill down at the department heads and see where we can save a little bit of money. We should not be operating in a deficit finance like other departments.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. Last question for this segment. Panhandling seems to be a growing public concern. Laws protect those who have their handout, and so far, the city's only response has been to promise to erect signs suggesting motorists devote their hard-earned money to charitable causes instead. What would you do as an elected official to respond to this concern more effectively?
I think the signage is certainly a start. I think it stops people from doing that, once they acknowledge that what's happening, and show, I still think that the signs are a great avenue to curb panhandling. And from what I understand, the man that was out off 35 is now moved in town, and we have to keep it, because we're never going to stop it. You go to other towns, and you got missionaries that are allowed to panhandle on the corner, under the guise that they're giving to a missionary, but they're really not supporting anything. And perhaps we need to divert those funds, and inform the people what our options are, because obviously, Chief Blanchard, we don't have places to house them, what are we going to do? Issue them tickets that they're never going to pay, and this is something that we're going to have to counter. And when a guest comes into this town, either the three ways to come into town, we need to let them know what is panhandling, and what do we not want to do, what do we want to support? Again, we're going to go back to the remnants section there, is perhaps since we have the donations, and we let people, instead of donating to this man on the corner, or this woman on the corner, this opioid addict that's pleading by the Walgreens at the door, give the money to the remnant. And maybe we put donation boxes up, so instead of giving the money to them, they put the money inside of the box.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Farrar. All right. That concludes the first segment of tonight's debate, so now we will move on to questions. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Jason, I'm sorry, man.
I thought it almost went too. Okay. This has been a subject that I have pushed tremendously for about the past nine months or so. The council as a whole has been looking for ways just to get something accomplished. I've gone as far as pulling up city ordinances in about six major cities in Texas. One of them was Abilene, Texas, they were the first city in the United States to eradicate the homeless problem. I presented these to the city attorney, the rest of the council had gotten it, and whenever we've come to me, it's, "Okay, we're going to push this, we're applying for the city attorney." Well, we got to stop on that, because ACLU's back in a panhandler in Houston, Texas, and they're suing us for $20 million, and we definitely do not need more lawsuits. A few years back, there was a Texas law that was played around with to protect Girl Scouts from being able to sell their cookies on city property. Well, panhandlers have their major leg to stand on, because ACLU groups and other groups that support them go out and tell some of these panhandlers in major cities, say, "Well, they can't do anything to you, if something happens, we'll vacuum free charge with legal fees." So right now, the signage is going up, and we spoke into the chief of police, we last council meeting, about talking with tech docs to put some foliage in some of the mediums around town that are in some major thoroughfares, so it's definitely been looked into, it's just a pretty big brick wall that we've ran into trying to deal with this issue.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Now, that concludes the first segment of tonight's debate, so we will move on to questions posed by one candidate to the other. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to answer, then his opponent will be provided one minute for rebuttal. Since Councilman Knight had the last response, the segment will begin with a question from Mr. Farrar. What is your question?
Jason, you mentioned industrial sites at Aransas and at Con Brown Harbor. How do you see Con Brown Harbor being developed, and what is your timeframe for developing Con Brown Harbor?
Right now, right now, my major concern is actually is infrastructure in town. The harbor does need to be developed, but we're going to have to try and get someone attracted to want to build down there. But right now, the only way to get your property in harbor is through a lease, and I think if we had better business incentives, as far as leases, not wanting everything upfront, we can submit on the bond for business startup incentives for our business owner. Because everybody knows, you open up a new business, you're not going to be having money till then, like somebody's cut the revenue floodgates, and you're just going to prosper first day. I think that's, would be one of the best things to start to get some development down, a matter of fact, I know it is. And the second part, we're going to have to go out and speak with developers or potential business owners, to try and get them to come to the table and sit down, and see if they would like to build something in our town.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Farrar, you have one minute for rebuttal of your questions.
As Jason said, entice people to come in, give them a reason for coming to the harbor. As you drive through the harbor, coming from south side, on the left-hand side, you see all the overgrown brush, you see retaining walls that were dilapidated. Off to the right, as you're kind of driving through, you see a bulkhead with no rails up on it. Not only is that a safety hazard, that doesn't help the appearance of the harbor. One of the things that we could certainly do, is if that's our asset, and we're going to be slowed down, let's give it something to make it marketable. Let's beautify the area, plant some palm trees, create a park down there, we know we got Memorial Park down there, make it draw, make it draw. We got the veterans working on memorial moods down there, make it attractive. Get rid of all the overgrown brush on the left, repair the bulkhead, strike the street, put some garden rows up, give it a place that is appealing to the eye, as it is now. It looks as though it's just been abandoned, and nothing has happened there. Sorry, though, we're out of my time.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Farrar. Councilman Knight, you have the next question.
I guess as far as my question, what would be your key steps on trying to lower the city tax rate that we currently have right now?
We're under a couple of restrictions, we have the five cents, the nickel, that we're getting to the police divisions, it goes for 2026 is when it expires. We have We have another half that goes to the development district. That's one stat. When you look at our tax rate and the rate way that things are going, one of the things that's gonna help us reduce that is to work in the negative. Meaning that we don't have to overspend our general fund. We have to look for the nickels as we go through each department budget, their personnel. What are they doing for us as a city? Once we do that, then we're gonna get more rooftops in the house. And that's gonna reduce our tax rate. And I think that's where we're at now is needing more rooftops in. We don't want big industry in here, we certainly don't. But we do want more citizens in here. This is a great, great community that we need to have. And we can get more citizens, more rooftops, gonna lower our tax rate. And there's the answer.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, you have one minute for rebuttal of your choose.
I'll go back.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, Mr. Farrar, now you have the next question to Councilman Knight.
Hi, Jason Easely. What do you feel is most needed in Aransas Pass to create the community that we all desire? What is it that you see from your vision, from your view, that the community could use?
The hospital.
Very quick answer. He had two minutes, now understand that. He had to drag hospital out a little bit. Yes, we do need medical care.
One second, is that your full response, Councilman? Okay, all right. You have up to one minute for rebuttal.
We do need medical care, yes, we do. It needs to come here and it will come with time and it will get here. Right now, what we need is we need a culture change. We need to change the mindset of our citizens. Once we change the mindset and the culture of the citizens, things are gonna come. We're gonna become more of a positive community towards each other. Because it's not me against Jason, it's not Jason against me, it's all of us as a community. Our community has to be harmonious together. We don't need the negative nancies that are just tearing everybody down. As I get on Facebook and I talk to people, people email me stuff, we have some really, really bright people in this town. They just care to step forward. They don't wanna get chastised, and I don't blame them for wanting to get chastised. That's what we've gotta stop. We've gotta get the community where it's harmonious and then we'll start getting together. And we'll start getting some more volunteerism because the city really, really needs volunteerism. You know, you look at the building across the street here, you drive out, look at the VFW Hall, twenty-nine thirty-two. You realize the city of Aransas owns that building? Everybody that drives through town sees that building. That is a reflection of who we are. That's the pride in the community. That's what I feel we need to step up is the pride in the community, stop the divisiveness and all become one and make our community the best city it is. And if it starts with the building, twenty-nine thirty-two VFW Hall, to get volunteer efforts to paint it, then let's do that. Little things are gonna mean a lot. One step forward is at least a step forward. That's what we need to do is increase the volunteerism of people that we have and embellish on the pride that we have as a community. Yeah. I think I did. I don't know. Lost.
We have one more question to ask the opponent, so.
I asked the last question, so you can ask me.
We have one more to ask you.
I guess as far as city finances. Basically, our biggest expenditure is payroll. I don't know if everybody knows, but on each pay, every pay period in town is bi-weekly. Our outgoing payroll every two weeks is an average of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. My question to you, how would you start if elected on controlling the payroll issue? Because it's substantially high in this town.
The answer to your earlier question, that two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that we spend is gross pay. The net pay to everybody that we have and actually pay what they take home is somewhere in the tune of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We can't get away from that eighty thousand dollars because that is a pension fund that we pay for the employees. That is their vacation time. That is their benefits. The span between those is called a labor burden. And that's what we have to spend as a city to make sure that the pensions are covered by the employees and they have the insurance. So our true net pay is about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But I'm gonna go back to my initial statement is that if we have to spend three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is included in that hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we need to look at the overtime. Because the overtime is a way of looking into the dollars. As you just asked, what would I do? I would certainly sit down with each of the department heads. When you look at it and find out, why is the overtime necessary? Is there a way of reducing it? Maybe we have to hire somebody else in that team to get the overtime down. But we have to start scrutinizing the overtime.
All right, Councilman, you have one minute for rebuttal of your choose.
No, I'll go back.
Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen. Now on to the next segment of our debates. I will ask each of you a series of questions. Each candidate is permitted up to two minutes to respond with your opponent, a lot of one minute for rebuttal. Next question is, you hear about it all the time or read about it on social media. What is there to do for young children or teens in Aransas Pass? And how do you see your role as an elected official to bring more activities and programs to the city with youth as their focus? Begin with Mr. Farrar.
Our youth is something that we certainly neglect. And we don't look at the youth, but yet we have it here. It is perhaps one of the things is we get them involved in civics. And as I stated and I have said numerous, numerous times, what Jason and I are doing today, what our city council does, those are civic lessons. A lot of us older folks, we had civics in school. The children today, they don't have civics. They get lost, they get lost in their Facebook pages. So we have to do something to entice them. And perhaps a junior council is one step of doing that. Getting the kids involved, the volunteerism to where we're not just independent, that we're all together. The kids will wanna come out and volunteer. Perhaps one weekend, we end up painting the bases of all the transformers. And they come out, they volunteer for that. Once we increase the volunteerism of our youth, then you're gonna see the civics and everything else taking the place, but it's getting them involved in the community. We don't want them to feel that there's no place to go. We have a great school district, but we have to work in partnership with them. And start letting what we do here, what we do as a council, what we do as a city, be a civics lesson and let them understand how the city operates, some of the challenges that we have, and also some of the things that there are to do. I've often talked about having a recreation center where they can actually go through and have that. And there should be a way that we can get volunteers to perhaps contribute ping pong tables. As I see some of the marketplace and some of the Facebook ads, a lot of people are giving some of this stuff away. Perhaps we get a building and we start a recreation center that serves multipurpose. So those are just a few of the ideas that I have about getting the youth involved, what our youth means and what we share as a society and in this community, get our youth.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. Councilman, you have two minutes.
Well, everyone in town that knows me knows that I'm probably one of the biggest penny pitchers there is. Even people on the council would think that because I watch every dime that gets spent, except when it comes to the use of elderly. That theory is out the window. That's why myself and the mayor and Fernando Quintanilla have spent months and months working with the Little League. And they're finally getting all their baseball fields redone out there. We're getting a concession stand redone out there. I've even spoken with the mayor because we have five acres of city property that's running parallel to the baseball fields. We're saying, well, what about doing like Peewee football fields out there someday? Because that's exactly right. I mean, there are limited programs in town for the youth. It's like right now Cory Elrod has a pretty good group of explorers. They do work, I called him yesterday about vouchers and he was outside somewhere out in the brush with the four kids out there going to training. And I think that working with a lot of the nonprofits here and where they can go out and promote things, maybe start some program for children. Because that's exactly right. Social media and computers have taken over kids because I have a sixteen-year-old son and a fourteen-year-old daughter. And that's the new thing now is computers and playing video games. The days of kids playing outside, it's a thing of the past. But as of late, you're starting to see it because there are some programs that are popping up. It's like when I was at Open Ceremony for Little League a couple of weeks ago, there was two hundred and seventy-one kids signed up for the Little League baseball program. I think it's starting to go in the right direction and we'll just have to work with some other nonprofits around here and come up with some ideas.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, on to our next question. Blight is everywhere in Aransas Pass. Homes and buildings lay abandoned, falling apart and pose a significant health and public safety risk. So far, it appears the city's response has been slow to resolve the issue to come up with a more aggressive demolition plan. Yards and lots are overgrown and brushed and weeds, and the city only has two code enforcement officers who struggle to keep up. How, as an elected official, would you get tough on blight, Councilman?
Well, we have been getting tough with it. It's just a lot of the legality is dragging it out right now. Because our city attorney had been working diligently on this before I got on the council. And there's several cases with buildings or lots that, you know, the problem is that people are paying their taxes, paying early, keeping up. You can find them all day long. All they have to do is go to court and say, not guilty. And then they'll get represented by our city attorney. And then you'll have to start the process all over again. And I totally agree that the buildings, yes, I mean, everyone knows the buildings in town need to come down. But it's not just can't snap your fingers and go out there and tear down a building. Because the city can't handle it because the city pays for its expenses. And they'll have to put a lien on the property and then you're hoping, well, is this guy gonna sell his property next week or a hundred years from now? And it all comes back to money. And but at the moment, and it has been going on, our city attorney as well as code enforcement have been working diligently on these two problems. So I can assure you that.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Farrar, do you need any rebuttal?
No. You know, BBSA board that we have has been very aggressive in looking at the buildings and going through legal codes and getting the buildings demoed. The BBSA board has even gone so much as the House of Wheeler and Commercial, removing not only the building, but also the parking lot and the utilities back to the town. Those are steps that the city's making. Those are steps because there is legal steps, because it's just as though it's your property. You wanna make sure that you have laws to stop the government from coming in and taking your property. The same way as these property owners have laws that they have to protect. Where I think that what we need to do is to circle back to code enforcement, perhaps man up. One of the things that I often times I've irritated years back, I had a lot over in Greenwood, but every three months, I would get a certified letter sent from the city to me to say, hey, cut your grass and the grass wasn't no more than a foot tall. All the while, all around me, there was four or five lots that had trees and brushes all the way thrown up and nothing was done. When you come through town, you come down through Rockport and come into town, look at the curbs and gutters. Even down through here, you look at the curbs and gutters. It's a violation that will take your weed eater and blow the weeds into the drains. That is not only that, it's stopping the drainage from properly happening. We have to get strict with code enforcement and have them come out and stop some of the blight because we can start it early. You go downtown, you look at the banners. Do we not have a banner ordinance? It says you can only have a temporary banner up for thirty, forty-five days, but the banner's been there for years and years and years. That is blight. That's what stops people from looking at it. Aransas Pass is an attractive little town, the little bitty things that we have. We've gone a long way in getting things improved in the last few years. Are we there yet? No. But this city council has been working on it, the city has been working on it. And I know Roxanne, the city attorney, is being very, very aggressive in pursuing these that need to be demoed. But as Jason said, there is a cost. And the lien is attached to it. Is that enough to forego the ownership of that lot? And that's what Roxanne, our city attorney, has to counter. Because we don't want anybody coming to our property taking it without due process. And that due process is rather lengthy.
Thanks, Mr. Farrar. Gentlemen, at least one city council member has suggested an idea to improve and enhance the city's gateways that would, if enacted, require business owners to substantially improve or modify their exterior for subs. But to some, the idea sounds more like an expensive imposition and government overreach when the focus in Aransas Pass should be on more important, bigger ticket items. What are your thoughts?
Here's that. I went to John's Transmission and that was when John was a lot of risk and so good man. And him and I talked a little bit. And he says, you know, the only reason that the city of Aransas has allowed me in here is because I'm not allowed to keep all these cars on the parking lot. I am not allowed to have that. I have to put them back in the back behind the fenced yard. John was very good about that. But now you've arrived by John's Transmission, it does not look, and I hope nobody hears from John's Transmission, it does not look appealing. That's what we have to work on. You drive through town and you look at the Texas Department of Transportation sign that says, Aransas Pass, Texas. It's been down for three months that I know of. Why has it been three months? When people come into town, they need to know where they're at, they need to be proud of where they're at. With that water tower, we painted a water tower, we put the logo on the water tower. But you know what? Driving in from Rockport, you can't see Aransas Pass, Texas. When you come in from this highway, you can't see Aransas Pass, Texas. That's the little bit of pride that we need is Aransas Pass, Texas should be up there big and bold. So you see it from every angle that you're coming in so that people know where you're at. I'm proud of my town. Now the town needs to be proud of itself, those little things.
Great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Farrar. Councilman Knight, you have two minutes as well.
Yeah, as far as that question, that remark is not only government overreach, it's intimidation. If a business owner is not breaking any city ordinances, the reason be let them run their business. Because I know everyone in this room knows that the past couple of years, small businesses have taken a major hit. Finally, people are starting to get out, starting to shop, but about the past year and a half, everybody's staying out. So the main people that took the hit, and a lot of them that got their doors closed down forever were small businesses. I think that the city needs to have exceptional relationships with small businesses and not overstep their bounds. Because it wouldn't be hard for somebody to say, well, I'm gonna close up shop and I'm gonna open up in Rockport, Porter Andrew's or heck, I may move to Toledo, Ohio. So I think that as far as everyone playing by the rules, paying their taxes.
All right.
I'm sorry, I got rebuttal.
Nope, you don't have rebuttal in this section yet. So gentlemen, because we have less than fifty minutes left, we're gonna jump ahead to questions from the candidates to one another. Councilman, since you were last to answer, you get to pose the first question to Mr. Farrar.
No, you can't ask me. What would be your plan to try and entice new businesses to wanna go to our town and set up shop here?
Same thing I said, and I would be very consistent, my message is what you see. When you drive in from Rockport, when you drive in from Porter Aransas, when you drive in from Pinkle Side, when you drive in from Greve Bridge. I want people to be proud of this town. You know, I envision palm trees coming up. I envision people to know where they're at when they drive into town. I imagine a sign being built, being up over there. I imagine the curbs being clean. How many times have any of you traveled to other towns and you drive through their town and you see clean curbs and gutters? It's not government overreach to try to have somebody do nothing more than you're required to do at your house. And based on the city charter, as Jason referred to, you have restrictions that you have to do. There's nothing wrong with asking these owners to do the same thing that we're doing. You don't have to keep fifty-two cars out front or keep junk cars out front that don't operate. If we don't have a code ordinance against it, maybe we should sit down at the council and discuss it and get something before the voters and say, this is an ordinance that I feel is appropriate to keep our town. We have to do something like that. We have to think out of the box. How are we gonna make our town sell itself when people drive through? And I want people to be very proud when they drive through. I want them to know where they're at, Aransas Pass. And if they wanna know that it's Panther country, great. But I want you to know where you're at, you're in Aransas Pass, Texas. We're a growing, very prosperous community and we want people here because we're harmonious in what we have, our actions that balance each other.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farrar. Councilman, you have one minute for rebuttal of your choose. Councilman, you have one minute for rebuttal with your choose.
I'll go.
Okay. Mr. Farrar, you have an option to ask, Councilman Knight, next question.
What color socks do you have on? I can't remember. I'll ask you the same question. You tell me, what do you feel is important to get more businesses, more residences to look at Aransas Pass in a favorable way and for us to skip over the image that we've had for so many years, we're relying down upon because of Aransas Pass?
Better business startup that's in us. I'd say probably the past 10 to 15 years, we've had councils sitting here that whenever a business comes into town, they stick their hand out in the face and say, "Well, you got, they only need a meat on the bone for a new business owner to have some money left to put in their business to get ground running." And in about, I don't know, five years, we're doing gradual increases on property taxes and even sales taxes. And I believe that's the best way to get new businesses in here is attract them to where they're saving some money when they first set up shop in our town.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Farrar, you have one minute for rebuttal with your choose.
When our general fund is challenged without raising the property taxes to us, it's hard to give a sense because the money's got to come from somewhere. And you know, at the last moment, I don't recall anybody just handing out money for everybody to have, it's not there. But perhaps what we need to do is just get a little creative on getting new businesses here. Jason, you mentioned about the Con Ground Harbor. Perhaps we take 15%, 15% of Con Ground Harbor and we develop it ourselves as a city, as a city entity. We see what we can do to develop 15% of Con Ground Harbor, get creative in it. And perhaps we open that up to local businesses, local craftsmen, and that becomes our start. Then once that becomes our start, we're going to grind traffic down through Con Ground Harbor. More and more businesses are going to be more inclined to come. They have to see a prosperous city before they want to come. And I think that would be a good start is to develop a small portion and to have an attraction where people would come here and they'd want to start businesses.
Okay. Councilman Knight, I think we have time for one more question if you'd like to pose your rebuttal.
This will be all up in the side. What are your thoughts on this $23 million lawsuit from the LTP gang over our heads? And what could you do if elected to help correct these problems going on right now?
That is an issue that we're all going to have to deal with. It is an unresolved issue. It is something that we know is on our plate. We don't know the outcome of it, so it's not really good for me to surmise on how I would do it. I do know this, that it is an obstacle. If things come to fruition, it's not going to be up to our council to deal with it, it's going to be up to everybody to deal with it. We're going to have to, in my opinion. I still, to this day, think it was a very, very valid argument of what we were trying to do. We were trying to do that in the grand scheme of things and it didn't work. So if we have an obligation for that, I'm going to support it, but I'm also going to look at the budgets and we're going to try to figure out how to pay this and how to get out of that together. Because there is money inside of here that if we got scrutinized a little bit more and we ask the department heads, is there something else we can do? Because our goal here is to make the dollars work, but also to provide more services towards you guys. You know, what oftentimes people don't realize is $1.2 million is what we spend for trash pickup twice a week. But yet, when you talk to the trash drivers, they say the majority of the cans are half full. They're not full. Yes, there is some full, but the majority of the cans are half full. Perhaps we took, put to the voters that we pick up trash once a week. Maybe that's that $300,000, $400,000 that we could save by having one time a week trash service. Look at your own trash cans when you go out. How full are they? But you ever paying for twice a week trash service at a cost of $1.28 million a year? And you look at that, now we've got another $400,000 in overtime. Watch the nickels, the dimes take care of themselves and we'll be able to provide you as citizens more services as we continue to grow as a city and prosper as a city. Did that answer your question?
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. Councilman, you have one minute for rebuttal with your choose.
I'll go.
Okay. All right, folks, we're just about out of time. So before we begin with the closing remarks, I'd like to again thank you, all of you, for being present here at the Civic Center, for attending the debates, for your civil participation. I encourage everyone here and whoever's watching our live stream on Facebook, if you are a registered voter, if you didn't vote early, come here to the Civic Center and cast your ballot on Saturday, May 7th. Aransas Pass Progress and Moser Community Media has been proud to host tonight's debate and a full story will appear on the April 20th. That's next Wednesday's edition of the Aransas Pass Progress. For the coin toss, Councilman Knight will begin the closing remarks. Councilman, you have three minutes.
Well, I just want to thank everyone that showed up. Thank everyone that's watching this on Facebook. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve you for this past year and a half. I've really enjoyed helping people that I have because I'm like an open telephone. If anybody ever wants to call me, phone number is 361-816-8572. I've talked to, I've talked to people like Ms. Celine as well. She called me, asked me what's being torn up by her house. I said, "Well, I'll find out for you, we'll give you a couple of days." I have, that's probably been my strongest point, is trying to bring trust back to city leadership. I have, I've even had Eric Kinderbauer, he's in the crowd, I don't know how many times he called me, he said, "You know what's going on over here?" I said, "No, but I have a clue I'm at work, but I'll call you later, I'll go to your house." I've talked to Ms. Ogres and I don't know how many times she would be talking about stuff in Bill H and D or Walmart, wherever we see each other in town. I really believe that there's a lot more things I can do to help each and every one of you in town because after all, it's about you, it's not about me. And I really, I really would appreciate it whenever it comes time for you guys to vote to consider me whenever you have to vote a ballot. And thank you so much for coming.
Councilman, thank you.
You know, we as a community have a lot of challenges going forward. New things, things that we anticipated, things that we didn't. But one thing we do have and we have to look at is the strength of our community, the strength of our citizens, that there's no one side or the other side. We're all in this together, every one of us. There's not a bad idea, there's not a good idea. Together, we can form where we're going to go in the direction. Jason, I applaud you for serving for city council. It's very respectful and I appreciate that. This isn't about Jason and I, it's about the city. Who's going to serve the city? Who's in a better position to serve the city going forward? We have challenges and I want to make sure that our city is positioned going forward to where we become very prosperous, we become the pride of the Gulf Coast. And we aren't losing what we want. We are living here for a certain reason because we love this area. And we certainly don't want it to change, but we don't dictate the change, we guide the change. We certainly don't want the industry coming in and telling us how to change. We want to develop and grow as we want to grow as a community. It's going to make us, make us much, much stronger together. And that's what we have is each other. At the end of the day, our goals are all going to be the same, is to make our community the best and I want to help those get there. Thank you, Mark.
Gentlemen, that concludes tonight's debate. I want to thank both of you for agreeing to participate. I want to again thank everybody here and attendance for coming and taking time out of your good Friday to join us for this event, both here and streaming on our Facebook page. I invite everybody to please spend some time here to get to meet your candidates after we conclude here. There are refreshments again in the back room, please avail yourself of them. And again, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Okay, there you have it, folks. There are good questions, good answers. This is your civic city in action here. Looking forward to seeing you at the voting polls. Take care.